So, welcome, everybody, to the Oakdale City Council Regular Meeting, September 28, 2021. And Sue, can you do roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item of business for councilors is the approval of the agenda as amended. And when I say amended, let me just comment on the things that were changed and added. So we added a proclamation for the Constitution Week. We added an item for consent. We modified an item on consent, item A. We removed the motion to adjourn to a closed meeting following this meeting or following the EDA meeting. And so with that said, can I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the agenda is approved as amended. First item tonight is our public hearing. This is for the Panda Massage and Massage Therapy Premises License Request. Is there any presentation or can we move right into the public hearing? So I will now open the public hearing to comments from the audience. Is there anybody here that would like to comment on this item? Is there anybody here that would like to comment on this item? And then finally, is there anybody here that would like to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back up front. And councilors, do you have any questions or comments? Then there's a action requested, which is to approve the issuance of these licenses. Could somebody make that motion, please?
Just to be clear, it's just this one, right?
The Panda Massage.
There are ones that come later, okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a massage therapy premises license to Panda Massage located at 5695 Geneva Avenue.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes as presented. Thank you. Next up would be the approval of minutes. And we have minutes from a regular meeting, August 24, 2021. Upon review, did anybody have any questions or comments? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'm moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. Next part of our meeting is the open forum. We have three things in front of us tonight that we'll talk first, and then I'm going to open it up to the audience for comments, classification study, and two proclamations. So Chris, do you want to take us on the compensation study?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you. Today, we have Flaherty and Hood with us, who we have engaged to do this classification and compensation study that we've been working on for over a year at this point, I think. And so it's been an extremely comprehensive process, a lot of work, and we're still working on the details. But the study's been completed to the point that we can do the public presentation, talk about how we've done the study, how they've done the study, what's been considered, et cetera. They'll do the presentation. This is being recorded, so it's available for anybody to see. And then the next meeting, we will go into executive session to talk about the financial part of the study. So with that, introduce Brandon Fitzsimmons, shareholder attorney at Flaherty and Hood, and his legal assistant, Karina Patino.
Legal analyst.
Legal analyst. There's a difference. You're right.
Yes.
Sorry, Karina. Go ahead, Brandon.
So, welcome, Chris. Just for the record, would you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Brandon Fitzsimmons with Flaherty and Hood, which is at 525 Park Street, Suite 470, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55103.
Thank you.
And a resident of Stillwater. So I will say this, I was at Everly Park last night. I won't reveal the results of the second, third grade soccer game, Stillwater, Oakdale, but we are in the public forum, but I'm sure it's around the community. So first of all, just a logistic, it looks like our presentation is up.
Good.
And should I clarify, should I say next slide, or is there a way we can control that?
Who's running it? Are you running it?
Yes.
Brian's running it.
Oh.
This is the report.
Oh, yeah, it's the PowerPoint that we emailed.
No, you don't have it. Do we need it? Yeah?
Yes.
I have it on my computer if we can plug that in.
Yes. Can we get the cable master to help with that? If we've got the... Sorry.
Maybe we go forward with the proclamations.
Yep, good idea.
Yeah.
Chris, would you mind sitting down?
Yeah.
So while we're getting set up and our technical elements are getting resolved, there are two proclamations. First one deals with suicide, serious, serious issue. So the proclamation from the city of Oakdale, whereas suicide is a national public health challenge that causes immeasurable pain among individuals, families, and communities across the country. And whereas with more than 800 lives lost in Minnesota each year, suicide is the eighth leading cause of death in Minnesota and a top-leading cause of death for people's ages 10 to 24. And whereas, on average, 132 Americans die by suicide each day, and over a million attempt suicide. Whereas, public awareness of this tragic problem is key to preventing further suffering and loss of life. And whereas, the risk for suicide can be reduced through awareness, education, and treatment. And whereas, everyone in the community can play a role in preventing suicide and are encouraged to know the signs, find the words, and reach out. And whereas, depression is a treatable illness, and up to 80% of people who seek help for depression experience improvement when treated with therapy and/or medication. And whereas, support is available by calling the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline at 1-800-273-8255, or the crisis text line by texting MN to 741-741. Therefore, I, Paul Ranky, the mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, hereby proclaim September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. A witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Oakdale to be affixed on this 28th day of September 2021. The second proclamation, then, deals with the Constitution Week. And so whereas, September 17, 2021 marked the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary. Whereas, public law 915 guarantees that issuing of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Therefore, I, Paul Ranky, the mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, hereby proclaim September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. A witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Oakdale to be affixed on this 20th day of September 2021. Thank you very much. Two pretty cool things.
Yep.
Hello again. Does it look like we're going to be on?
Yes, if you want to flip the switch, I think that...
All right, there we are.
There we are.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council and City Administrator Volkers, thanks for giving us this opportunity to present tonight on something, as Chris has said, has been a nearly year-long project as it happens, because it's data-intensive. So we'll first do a brief introduction, then Karina will come in right away with an overview of what is job classification and compensation, what's the backbone of that, and then specifically, what do we do? What was our methodology? What was our process as part of the study? Then we'll end with our brief game plan, which, as City Administrator Volkers had pointed out, tonight's to lay the foundation for the study for all of you, for the employees, for the unions, and the public. Then next week, we will go into executive session, also known as closed session, for specifically labor negotiation strategy. Obviously, 30% of your positions and more than a higher percent of that of your employees are unionized, so therefore, all of this is really intertwined with negotiations. So in advance of that meeting, that's where you'll get the data overload, but we try to distill it in a user-friendly, understandable fashion, and that's really where we can get into the details. So with that, we'll hop back to the PowerPoint. As I indicated, I'm Brandon Fitzsimmons. More specifically, I head up the Flaherty and Hood's Labor, Employment, and Human Resource Practice area. And primarily, all I do on a day-to-day basis is deal with labor employment issues for cities throughout this great state, east side of the Mississippi, and of course, all of them west of the St. Croix. But with that said, I'll have Karina introduce herself when she's up to bat. Obviously, she did the bulk of this work, and my utility comes in in this, is helping to implement it with the employees and the unions and negotiating with administration at the table. So, next slide. So a little more firm background, obviously, it's not a sales pitch, but it gives you context for right now the class comp study. So what do we do as a firm in St. Paul? We provide legal, analytical, public affairs, and media relation services to primarily Minnesota units of government, and specifically primarily cities. So we perform job classification and compensation services for numerous public entities ranging from populations of 1,000 to those that serve a population that, for example, be in the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority of close to 300,000, and everywhere in between with cities like Oakdale. For example, we've done one specifically for the city of Stillwater on this side of the metro. So what do we do that now Karina's going to jump? Obviously, we perform specifically a job classification and compensation study for the city of Oakdale. So with that, I'll hand it over to Karina. Thank you.
So I'll stay here a second control. So, good evening. My name is Karina Patino. I'm the legal analyst with Flaherty and Hood, and I primarily perform job classification and compensation services to local governments and public entities. So as Brandon mentioned, we're here today so we can kind of discuss the classification and compensation study that we conducted. So what was the reason for the study? We wanted to ensure, or the city needed to ensure, that each job within your organization is interrelated with one another to make sure that we're optimizing the achievement of the city's mission, goals, and objectives. We also need to determine the relative worth and appropriate pay rates for jobs, not just internally, but also externally. Another main reason or purpose for the study is to be in compliance with the Minnesota Pay Equity Act. So every public entity is required to report their positions to MMB for compliance for pay equity. So what is pay equity? It essentially requires entities to compensate for female-dominated classes. It's not consistently below the compensation of male-dominated classes for any comparable work value. Pay equity, what it does, it measures the skill, effort, responsibility, and working conditions that's normally required to performance of any type of job. So the Pay Equity Act also establishes job classifications, compensation systems, and establishes the job ratings for each of the positions that's required for reporting for the pay equity compliance. So as part of the service, we conducted a job classification. So what is a job classification? That's the systematic study of all the jobs. We do this in order to determine the activities or responsibilities, and may include any personal qualifications that may be required of an individual to perform such jobs successfully, so looking at minimum requirements, whether it be education, experience, levels of responsibility, again, looking specifically at the position and not the individual who's actually holding the position. We'll also look at the conditions that an employee might be exposed to while performing the job. And then we're also reviewing each job's relative importance, whereas it's not just jobs internally, but also externally. The next piece is the compensation portion of this. So the compensation is, again, the amount that is paid to the employee. A compensation system involves establishing how a municipal entity manages the compensation of employees, and if there's any policies related to that. One thing that we like to look at are the total rewards. So total rewards are all the tools that are used to motivate and retain employees. This can include what the employee may perceive as to value to them for resulting within your employment relationship. So this is compensation, any benefits provided to them, work-life effectiveness, recognition for the employee, performance management, and then any growth or talent development that they have through the organization. So this is an outline for the process that we took for our study. We conducted a job analysis, a job evaluation, conducted a market survey, developed a base pay structure, and then we'll go over implementation and how to implement the results of the study. So what is job analysis? It's the systematic process for obtaining the importance of relevant information for each distinct role that we reviewed. So the first step was to review all of your position information, so your current job evaluation system and ratings, how positions are evaluated, the existing job descriptions for each one of the positions, and also the FLSA status. We reviewed the organizational chart as the hierarchy of all positions is very important as part of this review. We also looked at the classification and compensation structure and schedule, and then importantly, looked at your pay equity report to ensure that you are in compliance, which the city currently is within compliance. So the first step for our job analysis phase is that we conducted our analysis through the use of a job analysis questionnaire. A questionnaire is a 20-page-plus document that was submitted, that it was required of every position that was included within the study to fill out. This questionnaire included eight different sections, which is supervision, so for each position, type of supervision that they receive, or if they are supervisor over any other roles, their essential functions or their position summary, and then the employees' function within the position. Again, we looked at minimum qualifications, so education, experience, what is required of a position to be successful in performing the role, versus looking specifically at an employee. We also looked at any desired qualifications where maybe, you know, ability to obtain additional licensure, certificates, or trainings that would be beneficial to have while in this position. Looked at the complexity, so the mental effort that it takes to successfully perform this position or the positions that we reviewed, responsibility level, so again, any supervision needed or given that may be required of the individual while performing the job, and then physical abilities, what is required of an individual to successfully perform all of the functions of the job. So we reviewed a total of 64 job analysis questionnaires for the positions that were included within the study. So we reviewed essential functions, as I mentioned. We're in the process of reviewing their FLSA exempt status, and then reviewing of the current job prescriptions for each position. The second step after job analysis, we looked at the job evaluation. So the job evaluation develops internal standards of comparison and measures the relative worth within the organization for the job. So a desired job evaluation system includes defined text for uniform, composite factors, subfactors for varying jobs, establishes degrees for factors and subfactors and corresponding points, and then establishes points for the qualities of the job, and again, focusing on the job itself and not the employee, place, or performing the existing job. So as part of a review, we reviewed your existing job evaluation system. So the city of Oakdale currently utilizes the systematic analysis and factor evaluation system, also referred to as the SAFE system. After our review, we determined that the system is currently not workable, and it lacked formal and an understandable way for job evaluation, so meaning if the city wanted to reevaluate an existing position, the current system didn't have a layout or an outline on how that should be done or certain steps that should be taken. Same with if there were to be a new position that were to be developed in the future, there wasn't a clear understanding on how to do that. Finally, it also didn't provide any guidance on the development of job prescriptions or job specifications. So again, if you needed to reevaluate a position, it's always recommended that that job description gets updated, or if we're creating a new position, we need to create a job description, and there was no clear outline on how or what steps should be taken to do that. So generally, a system should be formal, understandable, and legally compliant, such as the Flaherty and Hood Job Evaluation System, which is a system that we utilize to evaluate all of the positions that were part of the study. So the system was developed using a comprehensive review and analysis and strengths and weaknesses in writing and practice of numeral Minnesota local, state of Minnesota, and federal government systems. It's customized specifically for Minnesota local governments, and we're able to adapt our system for each entity's circumstances. And most importantly, our system uses the precise factors required for the Minnesota Pay Equity Act. So we're specifically reviewing the scale, the effort, responsibility, and working conditions required of a position. So I kind of went through what are those factors. So scale measures, again, experience, ability, education, training that might be required of an individual to successfully perform that job. Effort is the complexity or the mental exertion needed to perform that job. And the responsibility is the degree of acclonability, so meaning the level of supervision that holds, supervision given or needed, and working conditions, which measures the factors, which are surroundings or hazards. Surroundings, meaning the type of environment an employee might be exposed to while performing their essential functions, and hazards would be the physical abilities required of that individual. If you wanted to have a further detailed on the Flaherty and Hood Evaluation System, that can be reviewed on Attachment A of the public report. So the next phase is we conducted a market study. The first step was to establish comparable entities based on our statistical analysis. So what we did is we ran analysis and created, gathered the different entities that you were statistically most similar to. So we reviewed and analyzed that market compensation data for job classifications. So this is specifically what we surveyed for. We surveyed for the position's wages, health insurance contributions for both employee and employer. For the base pay structure, the steps and longevity pay if offered, and then other types of insurance, so this meaning like long-term disability or short-term disability leaves. We also reviewed which are your, like, PTO, holiday leaves, things like that, and then allowance and reimbursements, so, you know, uniform allowance or reimbursement for a car, cellphone, things like that. So after the market survey, we then look into developing the base pay structure. So the base pay structure essentially is a hierarchy of all job grades and the pay range established within the organization, which is why the hierarchy is very important in reviewing that. So the backbone of the BPS is what we call the predicted pay line, which is created by conducting a linear regression between two variables. The two variables that were used in this instance were the market data that was gathered for the positions and the proposed job evaluation points. So what we did is we also reviewed what the existing structure looked like. So the city currently has pay plans that are not uniform nor consistent. It currently utilizes a uniform structure for all non-union positions, which currently includes 23 grades. It has eight steps, and it starts at 80% from the start of your maximum wage, and then there's also a step increase of about 2.74% to 2.76% until it reaches step eight. So that's just for non-union. And then for union, these are all different structures, all depending on who they are represented by, so there's no uniformity there from union to union. In addition, we reviewed that employees receive longevity pay when they reach a certain amount of years insurance within their position. And then finally, in order to develop this new base pay structure, we solicited feedback from management on the components of what a new base pay structure should look like for the city. So based on the results of the study and city's management feedback, a proposed structure was then developed. The proposed structure will ensure that it's internally equitable, it's legally compliant, externally competitive, and then most importantly, it's affordable when it comes to implementation. So the proposed BPS, what it looks like is we're going to be utilizing a uniform structure, meaning that all positions should be placed on this BPS compared to right now, everyone is on a kind of a different structure. So with this new proposed base structure, it will include pay grades with pay ranges. It will be based on the difference between pay grades using a predicted pay line, and then it'll be set at a minimum portion of the maximum of each range. The pay grade for each job classification will be based on the job evaluation points. And then it'll also include, similar to what you have now, steps to move within the range. So implementation. So as Brandon mentioned, during our next, we're going to be reviewing what are the next steps, and then after that, we'll be looking into direction from city council on each city components. What we'll do is we'll draft communications to employees and any required negotiations with unions. Finally, we'll also prepare and provide to you a job analysis questionnaire template. So again, going back to post-study, is once you need to reevaluate a position or you need to establish points for a new position, you'll have that questionnaire template so that you have the tools to do that. We'll also be providing you with updated job prescriptions so that we're insured that they meet the state's standards, and then a job description drafting guide. So after we provide you with our draft, updated job prescriptions, again, in the future, if we need to reevaluate a position or if we need to establish a new position, you'll have all the tools needed so that you can do that on your end. We'll also provide you with a classification and compensation plan. That'll basically be an outline of what your base pay structure is. So again, going back to the number of steps, the grades, the percents from the min to the max, and then the classification and compensation manual. So this will be the important piece, again, post-study, is that in the future, if you need to evaluate points compared to what you don't have right now, it'll give you a step-by-step outline on how you should evaluate a position, when a position should be evaluated, when we need to conduct another market study, if there's any changes. So that's kind of going to be your go-to manual post-study on how to update the system, update your structure if needed. Any questions? I know I just threw a lot at you.
Well, thank you very much, councilors. Anything for either Brandon or Karina?
Karina.
What?
I don't know.
Chris, do you want to wrap up and talk next steps, then?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Brandon, is there anything else we need to share? I think this is, yeah, we'll make sure this is wholly available. After the council meets and set the directions for negotiations, we will be the technical next step after that, is a meeting with all the unions, and Brandon and I will meet with the department head and then the union reps. Give them the list of where everybody kind of ends up in the scale, and then there will be an appeal process through that. We'll finish up the job descriptions later. It's all based on the discussion and the financing, et cetera, so we'll have that discussion. But there's a lot of steps left, but boy, yeoman's work getting here, so nice job. And Flaherty and Hood have been a great partner, super helpful, especially since we don't have an HR department, and we had to wrap this up without one, so.
So again, express our thanks for the work that you've done. I realize that I was incorrectly stating your name, so it's nice to see you, Brandon. And then also, the importance of this can't be understated either. How our employees and our staff, A, need to be compensated fairly appropriately, and how they move forward with their careers is a critical piece, and this is going to be very helpful in that process. So if you have final words or a wrap-up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, just to come full circle, next step from us is you'll be getting, I call it the data dump, but Karina would call it an analysis. So that's where you get all the framework she talked about, that's where you'll get all the analysis and data. Then we'll meet next week again for labor negotiation strategy, and that's where we'll get the direction from you. One, if you've had time to absorb the data analysis, and then two, we'll give a condensed presentation of the data analysis, similar like this in a PowerPoint. Then three, at that meeting, that's where you can give us some direction. And then, as Chris said, then we can go forth in negotiations that are scheduled a day or two after that.
Yeah, right after.
Oh, wow.
So councilors, anything before they end? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are the consensus motions.
You want to do open forum?
Oops. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to open up to the audience for the open forum piece. Thank you, counselor. So anybody in the audience would like to come up and share a topic with us, a concern, anything? Please come up, approach the podium, state your name and address, and share your thoughts. Just for tradition, we have about three minutes is what we recommend for people during this process. So is there anybody here that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back forward then and move on to the next item. Next item would be the consensus motions, and we have four of them in front of us. Counselors, anything, any one of them that you would like removed? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions A through D as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consensus motions pass as presented. Thank you. Next on the topic on the agenda is the advisory boards and commissions. I think we're just going to move into if any councilors attended any of their liaison commission meetings. Start with you, Jake. Anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, Parks and Rec Commission spent vast majority of their meeting. They had filled out the survey as far as what they felt were the most pressing issues on our CIP, Park CIP, and no real surprises. You know, the main thing I'll mention is number one on the list, which is kind of a priority for myself personally, too, is the electrical on fields five through eight here at Walton.
Electrical on?
Yep, the electrical issues that we're having there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Olson?
I was not able to attend my meeting, and the meeting next week is canceled.
Thank you. My meeting was with the Tree Board. I also missed that meeting as I was coming back from a meeting up in Grand Marais. Councillor Swedberg?
I did attend my meeting. There was nothing pressing that was, came up, but have been working with all the commissioners and the committee on the Jane Klein Memorial, so there'll be more information coming out, how you can donate some money. So, anyway, thank you.
Good, thank you. Councillor Zabel?
EMC's item was on our workshop agenda, dealing with electric vehicles, so that was their meeting.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Let's move on to the next topic then, which would be the staff reports. And in front of us tonight, we have community development. Linnea is going to, I think, nope?
I can.
Okay, so this is the community development dealing with the comprehensive plan text and map amendment, zoning ordinance text and map amendment for the Greenway Station bus rapid transit oriented development. I think it's safe to say that we've had some conversation on this. You can fill in the gaps here that I missed, but we've had conversation on this, and we, as a council, we chose to be sure that the three elements of this that I just described are accurate, and even though we could have finagled something in language to make it workable, it is a critical element for people to rely on. So, we're going to have discussion, and I see the property owner is in the audience. Maybe you want to speak with us tonight, but we're going to continue this for decision-making for two weeks to, I see, October 12th.
That's right.
Do you have any more to fill in there? Jim, do you want to come up and say anything?
My name is James Alberg, owner of the property that in discussion you're talking about for redevelopment or reassigning. I am totally in support of what the city council is doing and understand totally of what they're dotting their i's and crossing their t's and making sure that this is a key element that goes forward. I'm totally in support of that, although I do want to say that we do at this time have a signed contract for the purchase of the property. He's actually in the audience, his name is Pat McGlynn, McGlynn Properties LLC, and if there's any questions or any comments that come forward in the discussion going forward, please contact me. The city knows how to get ahold of me. Everybody knows how to get ahold of me, and I'll be glad to respond with any answers or any comments whatsoever. If you have any questions at this time about the proposed buyer, he is present at this time, and he willing to answer any questions about maybe conceptual things of what we plan on doing with the property down below, down there, and at that time, we would just like to say thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you. Councilors, anything for Jim? Mr. McGlynn, you're welcome to say a few words or... Good evening. Would you also state your name and address?
Patrick McGlynn, real estate developer, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleasure to be here tonight in support of what you're working on here, and hopefully we can work together in the near future.
Very good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming. Councilors, anything for Mr. McGlynn? Very good, thank you. So, could I have a motion then, please, to continue this topic for two weeks to October 12th?
I'll make a motion to continue the community development staff report as presented to October 12th, 2021.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes as presented. We'll reconvene on this on the 12th. Next up on the agenda is time with the city attorney, Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, councilor. Nothing specific to report, but happy to answer questions.
Councilors, anything for Jim? Very good. Next up would be the administrator's report. Good evening, Ms. Volkers.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm glad to take any questions.
Councilors? Very good, thank you. We already did the presentations.
Yeah.
The advisories. So, we have in front of us the claims, excuse me, the summary of the claim rosters are from September 11th, 2021 through September 24th, 2021, in the amount of $435,735.87. Upon review, did any councillor want to question anything? Could I have a motion then, please?
Motion to approve claims is presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the claims are approved as presented. Thank you. We will now adjourn to the EDA meeting. Sue, we do a roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. First item of the agenda, or first item of business would be the approval of the minutes from August 24th. This is the Economic Development Authority for Oakdale. And upon review, councilors or members, did you have any comments? Could I have a motion then, please?
Moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the minutes are approved as presented. The first and only item of business tonight is in agreement with the Bethesda Cornerstone Housing Development Group. Linnea, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Before you tonight is a request for approval of a development agreement between the EDA and two entities controlled by Bethesda for the development of Bethesda's Cornerstone Village Oakdale project at Helmo Station. The development agreement establishes the terms and conditions of tax increment financing for Cornerstone Village Oakdale, including Bethesda's obligations in constructing and operating the project. The development agreement documents Bethesda's obligation to provide affordable housing and housing for people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It also includes specific provision for marketing the housing opportunity first to Oakdale and Washington County residents. And as well, the agreement requires that Bethesda will follow the Oakdale first policy in hiring employees for Cornerstone Village Oakdale. And finally, the agreement includes a look-back provision that will ensure that if Bethesda's total development costs at the completion of construction end up being lower than what's currently assumed, then the amount of the TIF note will be reduced by the same percentage as the decrease in the total development costs. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer questions from the commissioners, questions from the commissioners about the development agreement. Chris Detling from Bethesda is also here to answer questions, as well as Jenny Bolton from Kennedy and Graven.
Very good, thank you, Linnea. Councilors, first off, anything for Linnea tonight, or commissioners, anything for Linnea Anything for either Chris, who we met recently, or Jenny? I think Jenny. Okay, thank you very much. Councilors, any discussion or can I have a motion? Or should be commissioners, any discussion or can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to authorize the president and executive director to enter into the TIF development agreement to finalize the TIF assistance to Bethesda for their Cornerstone Village Oakdale project at Helmo Station and waive reading and approve EDA Resolution 2021 approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
That'd be a three to two. Sue, do you need, whenever there's a split vote, do you need to identify who's on either side? I don't think so.
You know who the no's were, right?
Okay. So, thank, congratulations. Really going to be a neat, impactful project for community and our whole region, so congrats. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.